First dive in by talking about the role of the school board and the role of your district administration. And it's really important for us to start by explaining why this distinction is so important. So, um, so a couple of reasons why we think this is just really important. Okay, so it's really important because as you're thinking about how to advocate for students in your community, you have to know who to go to. So we say all the time at School Board School, that to be an effective advocate, you can't just know what you're advocating for. You have to actually know who to advocate to, right? Like who actually has the power to change the thing that you want to change? So that's one of the reasons it's really important. Another reason it's important is because it's a school board election year here in Ohio and in lots of other states too. And so as you're deciding who you want to vote for, one of the things you need to listen for is, is there a platform, something they actually have the control to change, right? So, you know, I remember just like a couple of years ago here in Cincinnati, there was a candidate who was talking about how they wanted to really reform the customer service department. And, you know, if you're a constituent and you're like, yes, oh my God, and whenever I call customer service, people don't answer, I don't get the writing. And you're like, that, I care about that, I'm voting for you. Well, as you'll see a little bit later, that's not actually in the control of a school board member. They don't deal with day-to-day operations. And so if you vote for that person, you've now given your vote to someone who can't actually do that thing. And so the two, two of the big reasons why this matters is because we think it makes you a more effective advocate and a more informed voter. Okay, it's also really important because it's critical to having well-functioning school districts that everybody knows their role and stays in their lane. So when school board members step out of their lane or within superintendent step out of their lane, it makes it really hard for each other to get their work done. And when that happens, it's hard to make progress for kids. Um, and the last reason really ties into that one. I'm sure you all have heard before, people will always say, we've got to hold our elected officials accountable, right? And like, yes, of course we should hold our elected officials accountable. But if you don't even know what a school board member does, how would you hold them accountable? And so these last two connect because once you know what a school board member is supposed to do, if you see them stepping out of their lane, it is on you to hold them accountable. And so that's why it's really important to understand this role. It's also really important because as Suzy said in the beginning, here in Ohio and in lots of places around the country, we've seen our public schools are under attack. And our public schools really are a bedrock of our democracy. So when our public schools are under attack, our democracy is under attack. So if you're going to know how to fight back and fight for public education, you've got to elect people who are going to advocate for and support public education and building school systems where every child can thrive. And so that's why we hope you'll leave by the end of the night today, understanding what your school board does and doesn't do, and then some good questions to ask candidates. And so we're going to get into it now. Okay, so at the most basic, your school board governs the district and your administration manages the district. So what that means is that your board determines the what, the big picture. And your administration then determines the how, the day-to-day operations of the district. One really important thing is as it says here at the top, the board and the administration together are going to co-create the vision and priorities for the district. We want you to remember that because everything else needs to come back to that. Your board and administration have to have a clear vision and clear priorities for your district. And then the board is going to establish the policies and the fiscal practices in line with that. And your administration is going to allocate the resources and manage the day-to-day operations that are also in line with that. And so let's dive in a little bit more and start talking about policymaking. Okay, this is one of the big responsibilities of a board, right? They're a governing body, they're in charge of policy. So as it says here, the board makes or revises policy and is responsible for oversight. And the implementation of that policy is on your administration. So once a board passes a policy, that's the what, that's the big picture. Your administration is going to then take that and have to figure out all of the processes and all of the procedures that go along with that. Um, so a quick example here that we have, you know, every district's going to have a, a, a policy about attendance, right? It's going to be high level. In Cincinnati Public Schools, this is one of the sentences from it. "The purpose of the policy is to outline acceptable purposes for which a student may be excused from school, to allow for the appropriate recording of student attendance and the ability of the district to determine students who are truant." Big picture, right? That's big picture what? We say all the time, we should not be writing, um, practice or procedure into policy. So it doesn't say how this is going to happen, it just says what. So then it is on your administration to figure out the how, how is this going to happen? So they're going to take that attendance policy, they're going to communicate out to all of us, the families, what to do if your child misses school. They're going to set up the procedures so that, you know, the teachers and the office staff know how to mark someone late. They're going to know the processes for reporting to authorities if someone's truant. So that's that difference between the what and the how. And so you'll often hear that referred to as the difference between policy and practice. This is really important because if you email your school board or you go talk to your school board about something and it's a practice or a procedural change that you're concerned about, they're going to just bump you over to the administration, they're going to say, we can't do anything about this and vice versa. And so again, right back to what I just said, if you're going to be an effective advocate, you have to know who's got the power to change the thing. So policymaking is such a key function of the board that quite frankly, that's why school boards are under attack right now. Um, so for example, when I was on the Cincinnati School Board, we actually did an equity audit where we looked through all of our policies through an equity lens to see where we might inadvertently be reinforcing inequities. And then we systematically went through those policies and we revised them all. And so we know policy can be used to build more equitable districts, to open up access and opportunities for kids. Or like we're seeing now, policy can be used to take us back. Um, and so that is why it's so important to know that policy is a key lever for change and it's under the control of your administration. So I'd love to bring Laura in because she's sitting in one of these school board roles right now. So Laura, talk to us a little about any examples from your time on the school board where policy either helped build more equity in your district or where you realized, oh gosh, our policy is actually restricting access or opportunity.
Yeah, um, there are a couple that came to mind. And first of all, I should say that when I was deciding to run for school board and also when I became a school board member, I had all of these same questions for Elise. And said, what is my job? How am I supposed to do this? So I, I'm excited to see, see how I'm doing. Elise might actually give you a little bit of a grade of how I'm doing on this. Um, but the first one that I was thinking about was we, um, at the, at the school board in Shaker Heights historically have not taken any compensation. Seems like a funny one, right? Like it's, you know, coming from like great intentions, right? Like we don't want to take any money away from districts. I should also be clear, we are not talking about a lot of money that any school board members are making. I think it's a hundred twenty-five dollars per board meeting. So which can go, in our case, on average, five hours. So it's not exactly a huge investment. And, um, and also not something that politically makes a ton of sense for a school board to take on because it looks like you're just trying to take money. However, what that meant was who felt like they could join a school board and who felt they, like they couldn't join the school, the school board. So if you had kids and had to worry about babysitting and making sure someone was going to be with the, with your kids every other Tuesday night or whatever time your, your district comes together, and you didn't feel like you had the resource to do that, you couldn't take on running for the school board. And, um, and what that meant is although our school board is fairly racially diverse, it is not socio-economically diverse. And so one of the policies that we took on this year was to actually change it so that the, the next round of school board members, and since I'm not running this year, I don't get to take advantage of this until I run again, which actually makes it a little bit politically easier to get past. Um, but we did change that. So that's one of the ones I was thinking about. The other one I was thinking about was, um, we had just changed our student information system, which actually brought up a whole bunch of questions around what happens if a student fails a class and they take it again? When our systems were terrible, it, there was really no question because whenever they took it again, that became their grade. But now we had to decide, do you have to take it again in person for that grade to be the one that wins on the transcript? Can it be online? And again, this doesn't feel like such a big thing, but then we started to think about which kids can access coming in person? Which kids can access that? Who are we, you know, who, whose transcript ends up looking better when they're getting ready to apply for their first job or to apply to college? And whose transcripts don't? And so that was another one that we actually are still in the midst of kind of thinking through. Um, but I would say from an equitable standpoint, I would love to see that policy be that if you take it again in any way, um, that we would say, yes, that new, that new grade will count for your final transcripts.
Thank you, Laura. Those are both such great examples. And again, when we say looking at something through an equity lens, I know someone chatted in like, that's a great example for the one about school board members being paid that I think most people would not have thought of. Um, and so thank you for that one. Um, yes, and of course, like, that makes a lot of sense of like who has access to different kinds of, of curriculum and courses. Um, thank you for those great examples. Let's move on to another function of the board. So one of the other functions that's really important is budget and finances. Um, so, uh, the school board, as it says here, they generally oversee and approve the budget. But the administration, which is going to be led by your district's treasurer, they're the ones who are allocating the resources, allocating those financial resources. So as it says here, what you've probably heard a lot of is that your school board, as your elected officials, one of their main duties is to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars. To be clear, that does not mean they should be going line by line through a budget. That is not their job, right? So again, like we said on the first slide, when we were talking about this, the board and the administration have together set their vision and set their priorities. And so how this should work is that now that the administration knows the priorities, they should be bringing a budget to the board that's aligned with those goals and with those priorities. And so as we think about how do we build more equitable districts, the budget is one of those really key levers. Um, so it's really important to note here too, that again, like my assistant introduced me, we passed one of the first equity policies in the country here in Cincinnati. And it specifically calls out our budgeting processes. Uh, because there's a big difference between budgeting equally and budgeting equitably. And so that is definitely one place we want you all, as you're leaving tonight, to be thinking about, about how is my district doing this? And I know Annie's going to chat in a link to our equity policy in case that's something you want to check out and see, does my district have an equity policy? One of the really important things we want you to understand about budget and finances is that all of this budgeting has to happen in public. So your school board should be building in time to get public input into the budgeting process and a place for you all to weigh in. And to be clear, you do not need to be experts in public finance. I do not know many people who are. You can come to your budget here, your district's budget hearing with, you know, giving input on what priorities you think the district should be spending money on. So for example, we know there's a student mental health crisis coming out of, of the pandemic happening across our country. If that's something that you're concerned about, you can go to your district's budget hearing and you can ask, I'd like to, to know more about how the district is allocating funding to address mental health needs like counseling and mindfulness and social emotional learning. And so that's a really important place where you can have some input into the budgeting process. So we'd love to hear from Laura again. So since approving and monitoring the budget is such an important part of being a school board member, can you talk to us about how your district gets community input? And then for the people who joined us tonight, how they might get some of their priorities for financial priorities heard by their board?
Yeah, and I just want to also just highlight, um, making sure that your district has an equity policy is a really good first step. And then obviously making sure your district is then adhering to their equity policy is a second step. Because the dollars really are one of the biggest ways that we can either be living into our, um, values around equity or not. Um, we have in Shaker, and I suspect other districts have this too, we have a finance and audit committee. Um, it is, um, members of the community that advise the board on what are the things that we're seeing within that, um, with, within either our five-year forecast or what's happening month to month. Um, and part of our charter is that that includes folks that do really get into the details of finance and numbers. But that also, we have people on our committee that are coming with other lenses, either as, um, community members for a long time or parents or folks that have been in education or folks that haven't been. Um, and so that ends up being a really important spot for me to get a lot of information on what matters, what do I need to be focused on? Um, what are some of the numbers that are really going to stand out to me? And so my first thought is, you know, you know, you're sort of sitting there thinking, maybe I want to run for school board someday, but I'm not sure. That's actually a really good way to get started. And it was the first committee that I, um, got on myself as a school board member because I just felt like I need to understand this better myself. Um, so that's one way. The other way is because as Elise was saying, like this is about prioritization. And so, um, we hear a lot about where, you know, when an AP class is getting closed, if we don't have enough students that are in that AP class, we'll get, we will get emails, sometimes not even, um, just from alumni and from current students, but, um, this past year, we even had professors from, um, universities that were concerned that students that were in their classes that were so great, they're worried they weren't going to get that because they were an AP. Um, the reason I, I, I am mentioning this is because we are often as school board members hearing from community in, with, in a very strong voice, and it's not necessarily the full community. So one of the reasons why that AP class was getting shut down is that we didn't have enough kids that were signing up for it. Um, but we did have other places where we had students that were really interested in additional coursework. And that would allow us to be able to share, you know, other resources, other classes. And, um, and I will say it helps when you hear from both sides. So we had, you know, at that school board meeting, we probably had 10 people that came to give public comment. Um, we, you know, I can't even remember how many emails we got, but it was a lot, which I totally applaud. I mean, there's so much stuff that I wouldn't have known about what this course can help you do or not do. And I think other family members saying, here are some of the things we really want to see our children have access to. Um, but it's, it's just incredibly helpful from our standpoint to then think about, okay, so then where should resources be moving towards and where should go with them?
Yeah, thank you, Laura. Those are great examples. I know we used to say sometimes like the, the loudest voices aren't always the majority of voices. And so that is really, your point is a really important one that like we need more people to be speaking up when it comes to this so that you can hear all different sides. Um, so thank you. Those are great examples. Um, okay, let's talk about a couple of the other things school boards are responsible for. Um, another one is curriculum. So many constituents, uh, don't actually know or actually didn't know until it started making headlines, that school boards are responsible for approving curriculum and that includes textbooks. That's why, again, we know, that's why so many school boards are being taken over because this was a way to ban certain books. And so it's really important to know that your school board is the one who's going to ultimately approve your curriculum. And again, this is where it's important to have an equity policy. And also where it's important, like that first slide says, to know what the priorities are and the vision is for your district. Because your curriculum should align with all of those things. And so again, in most districts, how it worked in Cincinnati Public is that we assume as board members that your administrators, it is their day job to know deeply about curriculum. So they're the professionals, they're the experts. We assumed they would come to us with curriculum that was aligned with the values of the district that were outlined in that equity policy and the priorities that were set by the district. And so again, if you read through that, our, our equity policy, you'll see that we're clear about the values and building a diverse and inclusive and equitable district. And our curriculum aligns with that. Um, so I'll tell you, I've got, you know, two kids in Cincinnati Public. Last year, my kids were, I have twins, so when I refer to them as like, they were in eighth grade, that's why. They were in eighth grade and my daughter, uh, in her language arts class or her English class, they had to pick a social justice book from a list of like 20 different books to do a book report on. And, um, we got to, you know, see and approve all of the different choices. And it was everything from John Lewis's March, uh, to Mouse, to Being Jazz. I mean, these are literally books that were being banned in other districts were the ones that were being presented to my kids as options to read. And I'll tell you, I felt incredibly grateful to live in a district where my child was going to be exposed to this kind of literature and these kinds of stories. I did email the teacher to say that and my daughter was like horrified. Yeah, there's nothing more embarrassing for an eighth grader than that to have happened. But it was worth it to say thank you. I'm, thank you for presenting my daughter with, with these materials. Um, but we know not everyone on this, uh, session tonight on this Zoom is in that position. And so would love to hear again from Laura. We know so many school boards, um, where some of the members are vocal that they don't want to allow discussions in classrooms around issues of equity and inclusion and hearing diverse stories. And so when we think about curriculum, when we think about textbooks, can you talk to us a little about the challenges, um, that school board members face when not everyone agrees on the values or how to live out those values in your district? And then also like what could constituents who are living in those districts do about it?
Yeah, I mean, I have to say, this is, um, there's many times when we're sort of looking at things that are happening statewide in Ohio that I am very grateful that I am in Shaker Heights. There is, um, this is actually one of those things that has not been a, um, it hasn't been a real challenge within our local community. I will say, our, we have, um, been working over the last few years to end tracking in our district and that although not exactly curriculum, has a whole bunch of other equity considerations to it. So in fifth grade, um, kids were getting tracked and depending on whether they were honors or not, would then, um, decide what diplomas they could get when they graduated from high school. So basically decisions that were being made at nine and 10-year-old, ten, nine and 10-year-old kids were having that kind of impact. And then we just know there's so much bias in the system. And so therefore you could see pretty clearly white kids and Asian kids were getting tracked into honors at a much higher level than black kids and kids of color and, um, and certainly along socioeconomic, socioeconomic lines as well. Um, so one of the things that we've been doing is to end tracking. And I will say, there's a lot of people very concerned about it, right? They're concerned that for their kid that, you know, should have been in that honors class, are they not getting the same sort of rigor and support that they've gotten before? And again, this is an area where hearing both viewpoints is really helpful. Cause we've, you know, I remember when I was running, talking to a family that had, um, they were black and they, you know, talked about how hard it was to get their kid to even get tested to be into the honors classes. Um, we actually had been in a Jewish day school right before this. So when we came in, as I identify as a white woman, my kids are white. Um, when we came in, they said, which classes do you want, which classes do you want to be in? So like that was such a different experience. We should also note that their son is now at Harvard, so he probably should have been in the honors classes. Um, but so I'm really proud of the work the district's doing in, doing around this. And again, like hearing voices from people who have been affected by some of those decisions, I think are really important. Um, but the other thing I just think about when, um, like, you know, what do you do if you're in one of those, those places where there is book banning that is happening? Or there's people that are really concerned that, um, you might be infecting their child by sharing information about how people lived their lives? Um, I, again, like showing up at board meetings, writing letters to the school board and also writing op-eds in whatever local papers you have. Um, for us, actually the student newspaper is one of the, um, most well-read publications that are in Shaker. And so, um, so also writing up ads for the student paper, all of those things actually make a really big difference.
Those are great ideas, Laura. And I think when we talk about curriculum, we don't often think of tracking in terms of what curriculum is being, our kids being exposed to. So that's a great example. And then I love all of those ways that you can actually make your, your voice, voice heard, including the student newspaper. That's fantastic. Um, okay, let's talk about the last couple of things that our school board members are responsible for. Um, okay, so two more points and then we're going to check in on all we've learned so far. So it's really important to understand that the school board only hires and manages the superintendent. And here in Ohio, the treasurer, and then sometimes a couple of other roles depending on your district. So maybe the legal counsel, maybe an internal auditor, but that's it. Everybody else is hired and evaluated by your administrative team. Um, and that's really important because I know when I was a school board member, I, I think probably the most common thing people came to me with, whether they were sliding over to talk to me at one of my kids soccer games or stopping me at Kroger, was they had a concern about a specific teacher or a specific principal. And that's really hard because that's not my job. Um, and so what I would always do is listen because the number one job I do have as the, as a, as a school board member is to listen to my community. So I would always listen and then I would say, I'm going to, I'm going to take that concern and I'm going to make sure that I get it to the superintendent. So I'd get their email address, I would email the superintendent, the question or the concern with the person and say, can you please take care of this for them? Um, but that is really important to know, again, if there's something happening to, uh, that you're concerned about, who actually controls that thing? And then finally, but probably most importantly, um, the board represents you, the community, and they report to you. So that means as Laura just said, they should be hearing from you and they should be listening to you as they make their decisions. So all those examples Laura just gave, you can email them, you can talk at a school board meeting, you can write an op-ed. Doing all of those things is really powerful, um, because that's their job, they report to you. We also know there's often a difference between people who are really good at campaigning and people who are actually good at governing. So we want you all to know what questions you should ask these candidates to know, are they actually going to be good at the job? So we're going to start by hearing some from Laura. So Laura, as a school board member yourself, when you go to vote, what do you look for in candidates?
Yeah, I mean, so we haven't talked that much about what's coming from the state, but there is an onslaught of, um, potential legislation, legislation, um, policy decisions that are coming from the state all the time. So one of the things that, um, I want to know is that they're actually paying attention to what's happening at the state level in addition to what's happening in the, in, in our own sort of local community. Um, I think the other, you know, I think like at this moment in terms of thinking about the state, there is a real push, um, and I think Karen actually talked about this in the beginning, but a real push, um, sorry, I think Susan talked about it in the beginning, around privatizing education. Um, so the budget this past year included basically universal vouchers. Um, we get money from the OCC to do work around our buildings. That money is, is going to end up including private schools soon too. So I also want to know what their feelings are around privatization of schools, school accountability. What, what do we believe to be true for our public schools? Um, and then the other thing is what I have noticed with candidates is to what extent can they extrapolate their own experience to the larger community? Or to what extent are they talking to people that might have had different experiences? Um, so a school board candidate that's spending a lot of time talking about their own kid is, I mean, that's fine, but I really want to know, what does that mean in terms of how you are going to govern for all kids? Um, I will say in general, like the questions that I ask are, are very much around, tell me what you have done as opposed to what you will do. Um, this is something that I just think is really important to understand. To your comment, Elise, some people are really good at campaigning. So some people can say all sorts of things right now. But, you know, I really want to know, tell me about a time you advanced equity in our community. That would be a question that's certainly something that'd be really important for me. Even just the question of like, why do we want to serve? Um, actually tells you a lot about what their priorities are and also, um, what you know they're going to stay focused on as we continue to, to, you know, govern together potentially. Um, so I would say those are sort of the biggies for me.
That's great. And I think Laura, you already threw one question out there you would ask. Are there any other questions that you ask? Um, when you think about like, okay, I've got a couple of minutes with these candidates. Here are the, here are the specific questions I'm going to ask them.
Yeah, I mean, I, I really am kind of checking to see how much homework they've already done. Like, do they really want to be doing this work? So, um, there's sort of like some easy things that you can say without having a lot of evidence behind it. And so I'll just keep asking a few more questions like, oh, well, so, you know, tell me about the board meetings that you've had a chance to listen to. What were some of your reflections from that? It's pretty awkward if they've never come to any of those board meetings. And, and, you know, I think probably lots of communities have, um, live streaming at this point. So it's fine if I've never seen them in a board meeting, but I want to know that they're actually engaged. So it's fine if I've never seen them in a board meeting, but I want to know that they're actually engaged in that way. Um, I also really want to know what have they been doing during their campaign in terms of where they're spending their time? Um, so, you know, there's, Shaker's not huge, but we have a lot of very specific neighborhoods within Shaker. Cincinnati obviously is a lot bigger. Um, but I want to make sure that they've actually had a chance to be in all of our neighborhoods and get a chance to hear from a, a much more diverse set of folks that will have lots of, it's about education and, um, and what they want from our school.
Yeah, I think those are all so important. I know in the past, sometimes when I've asked candidates about, you know, tell me a little about the meetings you've been to and what you've heard, um, and what we're missing out, like what we're not talking about. And I've discovered that they haven't actually been to meeting, any meetings, not, not, and, and, and you think, huh, like how are you, how do you, how do you know what the work is that we're doing right now and what you want to do differently if you've not been? And I'm not saying you have to come every single meeting, but like, have you gone to enough that like Laura's saying, you actually know what the topics are? You're ready to jump in and you know what else that's not being talked about that you do want to address?